The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees is now convened in a committee of the whole meeting on Thursday, September 6th at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center at 10300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Monday, September 10, 2018, regular board meeting agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. No action will be taken at this meeting. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees and not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. This meeting is open for all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary, and that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on CFTV Channel 16 and on CFTV Online, the district website. They will also be rebroadcast throughout the month on Channel 16 and available as video on demand on the website. For the tape to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. We'll now go to, let's see, we don't have any, no Boy Scouts tonight, and recognitions portion of our agenda. The superintendent honors and achievements portion will be done on Monday night. So I'd like to right now introduce Dr. Pam Wells, Executive Director of Region Four, who will be recognizing our Elementary Teacher of the Year and our Region Four Superintendent of the Year.
Thank you, Dr. Ogletree, members of the Board, Dr. Henry, and certainly all of the employees and guests who are here today. I think you all know what a wonderful privilege it is for me to have the opportunity to come and publicly celebrate with you the selection of Dr. Henry as the 2018 Region Four Superintendent of the Year and Gina Peña as the 2018 Region Four Elementary Teacher of the Year. I'm very proud to help to present these awards to two very distinguished educators who are committed to providing excellence in service for children. And I have to tell you that this is the first time that I can remember that there has ever been a school district that has had two honorees in the same year. So it is especially wonderful for me to come to my school district and be able to do that. And so we're going to begin with today's presentation by celebrating our Region Four Elementary Teacher of the Year, Gina Peña. Every fall, the Texas Association of School Administrators facilitates the Texas Teacher of the Year Program, which recognizes Regional Teachers of the Year for their outstanding leadership and excellence in teaching. This year, the Region Four Teachers of the Year Program recognized 90 outstanding teachers from 44 school districts and two charter schools from throughout our seven-county area. But what is really important for me to share is that there are more than 97,000 teachers that are in Region Four, and Gina is the Elementary Teacher of the Year. That's pretty outstanding.[352.12][352.12](APPLAUSE). You probably know that Ms. Peña has 17 years of teaching experience. Most recently, she is now teaching as the Visual Arts Specialist at Lampkin Elementary School. She believes in engaging students by including personal connections that she has. She encourages their curiosity. She challenges them, and she also wants them to have real-world applications. What was most impressive about her is that she has received numerous accolades during her career, including being a recipient of the National Audubon Society Hog Island Teacher Institute Scholarship, the National Gallery of Art Teacher Institute Fellow, and the National Geographic Linbad Expedition to Antarctica Grosvenor Teacher Fellow. These opportunities have helped her to bring the world to her students and to demonstrate her passion to promote a global understanding through the arts. And so Ms. Peña, I'd like for you to come up if you don't mind, and I want to share with you that we have some of the sponsors of our Region Four Teachers of the Year Program with us this evening. We would not be able to have such a wonderful event without the sponsors that we have. And so in commemoration of your selection as Region Four Elementary Teacher of the Year, Dr. Christine Gaye, Instructional Lead Consultant with Office Depot, has a token of appreciation for you. She is actually going to be giving you your own laptop.[447.28][447.28](APPLAUSE). And it is also my pleasure to introduce Shanna O'Neal, who is the Business Development Manager with Hahn Company, and she is going to present you with your very own chair that Hahn has designed for you.[468.31][468.31](APPLAUSE). So we'll get a picture, if you don't mind, in just a second with the sponsors bit. I know you probably have a few people that you want to recognize as well, and we are so appreciative of the work that you do for the children that you serve. I hope you all don't mind, but I'm also going to share with you that she just told me that she is a graduate of the Region Four Alternative Certification Program. So I can't wait to get my folks to come and interview her.[509.12][509.12](APPLAUSE). So congratulations to you, and please come introduce the folks that you want to introduce. And I'll take, yes, we will take your presence.[519.12][519.12](LAUGHTER).
My goodness, I didn't know I was going to have a podium tonight. I want to just thank everyone for this opportunity. This is not something that I take lightly at all. It's not something I expected. So just to have all of this gratitude for doing something that I really love to do is very interesting.[542.29][542.29](LAUGHTER). I want to thank my family, my husband and my sons that are here, because I know that they've sacrificed a lot for me to chase my dreams and do what I want to do. Thank you.[553.79][553.79](APPLAUSE). Oh goodness. And I also want to thank my school family, who's here to support me and for giving me an opportunity and to take me seriously when I come to you with crazy ideas.[571.66][571.66](LAUGHTER). And to encourage, to encourage just what I, what I really, really believe in. And it's, it's, it's really wonderful when you have a boss that you go to with something kind of over the top, and she just looks at you and smiles and says, "I trust you. Go for it." And Mrs. Berry, (LAUGHS) thank you for finding a new family for me and for bringing me to Lampkin. Thank you.[607.38][607.38](LAUGHTER).
I told them I would like this. I worked very hard to find you.[612.41][612.41](LAUGHTER).
So just thank you. Thank you for your support, and we've still got some pretty big plans. Thank you for all that you do to keep this place running so smoothly, and I'm just very
Ms. Peña, we thank you, and you've made our whole district proud, and many blessings come your way. Bless you.
And so, Dr. Ogletree and members of the Board, and certainly Superintendent Henry, it is my very distinct pleasure to recognize a person that I know deserves this because I actually worked for him, and I know that there is no one that is more deserving to be identified as the Region Four Superintendent of the Year. So let me tell you a little bit about this award. The Superintendent of the Year Program is sponsored annually by the Texas Association of School Boards and Region Four Education Service Center, and its purpose is to recognize the visionary leadership and direction of one outstanding superintendent from each of the 20 regional education service centers. We had several outstanding superintendents who were nominated in Region Four, so it is very significant that Dr. Henry was selected by a committee of school board members for this honor. Dr. Henry has demonstrated repeatedly during his seven years at Cypress Fairbanks ISD, and now starting the eighth, that he possesses the vision, talent, commitment, and leadership to work successfully with the district's board as a team of eight, with the staff, with the community, and that he always makes decisions that truly are in the best interest of children. As I said, I know from personal experience that Dr. Henry leads Cyfair ISD with passion, with purpose, with integrity, and also with kindness, and that he is solely focused on providing equity and equitable opportunities for all children. I think that's why Cyfair ISD for All resonates so much. So although I know the Board is very well aware of his accomplishments since you nominated him, I would like to share with the audience just a few of the examples that, of Dr. Henry's exceptional leadership that resulted in his selection as Region Four Superintendent of the Year. One of the things that I know he would give credit to others for, but it's important to have a leader that is focused on this, 100% of the district's campuses have earned Met Standard rating for the last consecutive years since 2012. Cyfair ISD has ranked number one for financial performance for seven consecutive years among the 200 largest districts in Texas by Education Resource Group. Cyfair has received a five-star rating from Texas Smart Schools for academic progress and cost-effective financial management for the last seven years. Certainly, the successful passage of a $1.21 billion bond referendum represented the trust that the community has, but also represented an awareness of the needs for our growing school district. Certainly, the creation of the Cyfair ISD Police Department has been important to maintain security and safety for staff and for students, and the fostering of community partnerships that have brought the district $14 million in district and school donations. And probably most importantly, developing a successful academic program for students who needed additional assistance. This is just a smattering, a sampling of the many accomplishments that Dr. Henry's dynamic leadership has leveraged to foster student success and efficient and effective district operations. And achieving this excellence is very difficult in this day and time with the complex educational and political environment. But Dr. Henry, your record of excellence is a tribute to your passion and commitment to the students and the community. So at this time, I'd like you to come forward because we have something for you as well.[892.16][892.16](LAUGHTER). So we have a clock, and I mean, I'm making it do things it's not supposed to do right now, but I think it will work after we finish this. It says 2018 Superintendent of the Year, Mark Henry, Cypress Fairbanks ISD. Congratulations.
Dr. Mark, we are so proud of you, and we know that you're the best, not just here in Region Four, but all over the state. So we're really happy and proud of you. You deserve it.
Thank you, Dr. O, and of course, thank you, Dr. Wells. I know Dr. Wells was kind and said I was her boss. That's really not true. Maybe on some organization chart I was, but I was leaning on her my first year here to make sure I didn't mess things up, and she helped me get off to a great start. And just very quickly, I'd like to thank all of my school family that's here. Any accomplishment that I'm receiving is due to the hard work of all of the great people, several of the great people in this room, and so many other, so many other people, and just the community at large. Cyfair ISD is a community school, and you know, that's what I told the committee. I said, "I don't know how you can be this large and still be a community school," but somehow that happens, and the main reason that happens is because of the seven people that we have that serve on our school board. They have the interest of all of our students, not just some of the students at heart, and that makes a world of difference. So for all of you who helped me receive this award, thank you very much, and it's an honor to serve alongside of you.
We're going to take a five-minute break so that we can greet and congratulate the All right. We are back in session. The Board will now hear a report from the administration on the district's board monitoring system. That will be done by Ms. Hall and several others.
Tonight, the administration would like to provide you with our recommendations for updates to the 2018-19 Board Monitoring System. The Board Monitoring System is the process utilized by the Board to measure and communicate the district's progress toward achieving identified target objectives that are directly aligned with district goals and the superintendent's evaluation. This evening, each associate will review the recommended target objectives for each goal, and if it works for the Board, we'd like to go through all of the goals and objectives and then provide the opportunity at the end of the presentation for any input, feedback, or questions that you may have about the document. I believe you have a copy of the recommended target objectives at your place, and so we'll begin with Goal One, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Macias.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Good evening. If you look at, at Goal One regarding academic achievement, you'll see that our goal remains as stated, "The district will ensure academic performance and achievement levels reflect excellence in learning and attainment of both high expectations and high standards for all students." As you look at the objectives, you're going to, you're going to see that the objectives have remained the same because they're all important areas that we need to continue focusing, except for Objective One, that I'll talk about in just, in just a little bit. But you can see that Objective Two refers to increasing the performance on STAR and end-of-course exams. Objective Three, continuing focusing on, as Dr. Henry says, eliminating the achievement gap. Objective Four, we always want to continue focusing on increasing the graduation rates for all students. And then Objective Five, the making sure that we continue focusing and working on industry certifications and that they, that our kids are earning those certifications as they're leaving our, our school district. And Objective Five, continuing to focus and working on increasing all students, specifically the economically disadvantaged students', participation in advanced courses and dual-credit type opportunities. Now going back to Objective One, that's the one that you'll see that is quite different from what you've been accustomed to, and the reason for that is because the state accountability system goes into, into play this school year, the new one, for our campuses. So you'll see that the goal, the objective states achiever exceeds state accountability targets. In the past, you've seen all campuses receive the Met Standard. Now you see all campus achieve an overall skill score of 80 or higher. That 80 is very much equivalent to the old recognized, that recognized level that we used to have in the past. So that is our target for, for, for number one now. I will turn it over to Goal Two.
Thank you, Dr. Macias. Goal Two, safe and healthy environments. The district will provide a safe, disciplined, and healthy environment conducive to student learning. If you recall, last year, we had two goals, and that would be Goal, Objective Number Two, to increase the number of students receiving face-to-face instruction by decreasing the overall number of students removed from class. Objective Three, to expand implementation of positive behavior intervention and support PBIS processes to all CFISD comprehensive campuses. This year, we've decided to add Goal One. If you remember last month, we shared with you the district's district-wide safety plan to be implemented and continued for this school year. So we are asking that you allow us to add Objective One, which will be to implement the comprehensive safety and security action plan to improve the safety and security of all facilities. That's Goal Two. Goal Three is human capital. The district will recruit, develop, and retain highly qualified and effective personnel reflective of the student demographics. There were no changes on this particular goal, our objectives, moving forward for the 2019, 18-19 school year. We would like to continue with Objective One, to implement a recruitment plan focused on recruiting a diverse leadership staff reflective of student demographics, and we work closely with school leadership and campus principals. Objective Two, to provide a competitive compensation package for all employees. And as you know, that goal is in collaboration with Stuart Snow and the associate team. And Objective Three, to research, develop, and implement a plan to improve teacher attendance. And again, that is a district-wide collaborative goal that's working with campus leadership and district leadership. At this time, I'll turn this over to Teresa Hall for Goal Four.
Okay. Goal Four focuses on communication and community relations. Target Objective One continues to be carried forward as we continue to implement the district's comprehensive marketing plan. There is a slight modification to the evidence of progress as we work to dive deeper into the campaign and enhance our marketing and participation of our campuses and departments. So there was a slight modification in the evidence. Target Objective Two remains unchanged with the modification in the evidence as well, and it specifically includes some of our comprehensive communication plan tools, including social media, the website, video, press releases, and crisis communication. Target Objective Three includes just some minor edits, but basically, this target objective remains unchanged as we continue to focus on increasing the number of subscribers to our mass communication tool, which is School Messenger. And Target, Target Objective Four remains unchanged as well. So that is it for Goal Four, and I'll turn it over to Stuart Snow.
Thank you. Goal Five, the overriding goal is the district will exercise fiscal responsibility to maintain financial strength and provide the financial resources for the educational program and support needs. The achievement of this goal is evidenced by the completion of four different objectives. We don't have any changes in the goal or the objectives. We are just updating the timeline for which the completion of those target objectives will occur. Objective One is to develop and manage an operating budget for the fiscal year 2019-20, and we will begin that process in January or the 19-20 fiscal year, culminating in the adoption of that budget in June of 2019. Goal Two is to maintain an appropriate fund balance. We will be continuing to manage the current budget, the 2018-19 budget during the, during the course of the year, with the ultimate result in preparing and presenting a comprehensive annual financial report to you in November of 2019.[1558.13][1558.13](SNAP) Excuse me. Goal Three is to maintain underlying bond ratings from the major bond rating agencies, and we are currently working on the process for selling the next series of bonds. And in fact, we will be presenting a bond order to you tonight for your consideration. And then Goal Four is actually selling those bonds and the process that we have to go through in order to, to do that. So with that, I will turn it over to Roy Sprague for Goal Six.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. Goal Six, Operations Management. The district will ensure that the facilities adequately support the educational program and other operations. This goal remains the same as it was in the 17-18 school year. However, we have modified and added some new objectives here, and one is remaining the same. Goal Number One, I mean, Objective Number One related to transportation is similar to what we had last year, but we've refined it with a little bit more detail to address the AM and the PM on-time performance of our routes and addressing any increased efficiencies that we can do with our routes and organization of those routes to better our performance time, as well as be able to increase the instructional time at the campus level to avoid late buses. Objective Number Two is a new objective, and we would like to work on increasing the reimbursable breakfast participation percentage. We currently look at about 28.6 right now, and we'd like, our goal is to increase it up to 30%, our target. Under Purchasing, Objective Number Three is a new objective for us, and we'd like to implement a vendor performance system to better understand how contracted vendors conduct business with Cyfair ISD. Goal Number Four, Objective Number Four, I keep saying Goal, I apologize. Objective Number Four is a new one under Facilities Planning and Construction, and we want to complete an update in the facilities assessment to identify additional facility renovation needs, safety and security, and program enhancements, and submit recommendations for consideration to a long-range planning committee for a future bond election to continue to address the investment and maintaining our infrastructure that we have so that we can provide good quality educational facilities for our students to learn in. Goal Number Five is, Objective Number Five is the same, to ensure the optimal performance of our HVAC equipment to help reduce utility costs and conserve energy for the district. The more money we can save on the utility side is more dollars we can put back into the classroom to support instructional needs. And then Goal Six is a new goal under our Maintenance and Energy Management Group, is to monitor, evaluate, and make adjustments to our elementary school pilot Campus Energy Education Program, as we refer to it as CEEP, for full implementation district-wide at all campuses. This is part of a behavioral modification program that we've implemented. We actually did a much smaller pilot a couple of years ago at eight facilities, and we achieved about an $80,000 savings over the course of that pilot. So we do anticipate we can get some substantial savings as a result of implementation of this program, again, that we could put more dollars back into the classroom as a result. And that concludes our presentation, and we'll be all happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
All right, Board members, any questions? Very good. Okay.
Just, I'm sorry, did somebody else, were you going? Just, number one, this Board Monitoring System is awesome. I'm just going to tell you that there's a number of districts out there that have come to me asking for a copy of what we do as a Board and monitoring what we are doing as a district. So the whole, this presentation is amazingly well-done, and I appreciate it, and I So the whole, this presentation is, is amazingly well done, and I appreciate it, and I know that there's a lot of facts that go into it, and we get into that, too. And I appreciate what you're doing here. So I really don't have any questions, I just want to compliment you on what you're doing. I think that, uh, keeping us informed as to what we're doing and knowing that we have these goals is highly important. So I appreciate what y'all are all doing to do this.
Tom.
In a similar fashion, uh, I would say kudos. This has matured wonderfully well since it was first introduced, and this is such a dramatic improvement over what was done twenty years ago. Truly delightful. This is, this process is a good example of why, Mark, you were named Superintendent of the Year for Region Four, but it also is a clue why you did not receive the honor that you deserved, being Superintendent of the Year for the State of Texas. When so many pieces of the puzzle come together, you often do not get, the leader at the top does not get the credit. But, but that's okay, too. Bottom line is the students benefit from this. Uh, on Goal Number One, at some point in time, I'd like for us to expand out and start taking a look at our top-end students. Uh, you know, we, we have been talking about this, and Linda, I have made all kinds of comments and questions over the years as to what are we doing for our commended, what are we doing to try and move our middle up to the commended? I've spoken to principals, so I know we have a lot of programs addressing this, but at some point in time, perhaps not this year, but perhaps next year, it, it may make sense to move that into Goal Number One. But I'm also sensitive to the fact that, that we can't push all the buttons at the same time with the limited resources. Uh, and, and clearly, this board has spoken, uh, often and continuously of our two major goals, i.e. every student every day, which is every campus making, uh, what we consider to be an acceptable standard, and closing the achievement gap, and this district does perform admirably. But, but still, I, I would like, if possible, to see that moved, move into this and maybe some thinking about it for next year.
Uh, Mr. Jackson, we can, we can add an objective for that actually now, for this year, that focuses on the Meets and Masters, which you've spoken to us about in the past. So if you'd like, we can actually go back and modify this and add an objective.
I would like that, uh, but I know the budget's already been set, uh, and it, and for a district this big, it's hard to, hard to turn a battleship, uh, but I would like to see that inserted so, so that we can become a little more aware of it. And, and certainly, the state of Texas has modified their algorithm for how they evaluate us, and although I don't necessarily agree with it, I know they're looking, uh, as well.
Okay. Then I'll make a note to make sure we add it for next year.
Thank you. On, on Goal Number Two, uh, Item Number Two, I, when we added this, I raised the, the question at that time about unintended consequences. We all agree, we all know that you can't learn if you aren't in your seat. You know, the, our, our very distinguished principal over at, uh, at Cy Ridge, that was one of his overriding goals. He wanted to deny students the ability to get out of class. He, uh, he always said, that's what their goal was, was not to be in class, and he did, he was not going to give them that opportunity. So, so I understand the concept, and he showed that it could work at Cy Ridge, and he made it work, right? But I'm still sensitive, and perhaps we can be aware, does the additional classroom management to make it happen, are there unintended consequences? Uh, and, and of course, one of my colleagues also spoke about this. Uh, so I'm not saying we should add or modify anything here, but when you keep us updated on our progress, uh, we'd like to be sensitive, uh, to those thoughts and observations. And perhaps it can only be done anecdotally, uh, but also know that, uh, a, a principal who is the daughter of one of our named schools made a point that, uh, critical mass can be as small as one student, uh, either for the benefit of all students or for perhaps, uh, a reduction in actual teaching time. When we look at, at Number Three, and Deborah, you have, you have talked about this before. For Goal Number One, I think as a board, we've always been firmly behind this, uh, but I would like, as I mentioned last year and the year before, for us to move and, and perhaps demonstrate, uh, if there is research out there, and I know there's plenty of research, why this is good for academic attainment of our students. Because that's really what all, every goal is that we have in all of the, uh, sub-objectives. You know, if it, if it does not enhance attainment for our students, then we have to ask ourselves the question, why are we doing it? Uh, and, and I just see that as moving us down the road with a, with a little more mature thought, uh, on that. Clearly, on Goal Four, Number Three, uh, management has pointed out that we need a lot of work here. And we don't need this, uh, tool today, uh, but I do think, uh, we need to do that, that which we can, so that at the point in time that we need the tool, we know that it is Pam Wells already talked about Goal Number Five, that, about this being the premier district in, uh, the state of Texas, and I think, uh, Stuart's received at least one honor, I know of identifying that. I do like adding, uh, Item Two on Goal Six. Uh, one of our prior board members, Kevin Hoffman, that was one of his key points when he was here. He kept saying, "We can increase this, there are ways to be done." Uh, and I know, serving on Leadership Tasby, that other districts had policies and procedures in place to enhance that particular objective. So I'm glad that, that it is on, that Objective Two is part of Goal Number Six. Looking at Goal Six, what I'm not seeing any, any place in here, uh, is an update as to where we stand on our IT rollout. And of course, for IT, it has always been my view that, that it is a wonderful tool, but perhaps in the area of education, we have not had the explosive returns, uh, that we see out in the business world. And, and certainly, education is completely differently, uh, a, a different approach and, and target. Uh, and I know, I worked on this when I was in grad school at Texas. I couldn't get it done, but, but y'all are a lot smarter than I am. So, and, and our IT endeavor is, is tied very closely to student attainment. I don't know if we need to have it as a, a separate objective under Operations Management, but perhaps we should. So that concludes my comments. And by the way, even though I had a ton of comments, one because I'm a talker, but y'all already knew that when you elected me eight years ago, uh, but a really good job. So merely because I had a lot of comments doesn't mean that y'all didn't do a, a superb job. So well done.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Deb.
I would, I would just echo on what Tom just mentioned about the IT portion of that, because that is, the IT portion is so integral, not only within the district, but for our students as well, so I would like to see that added as well next year.
Yeah, we'll work that in. I'm not sure, you know, we can talk about under which goal, uh, that might fall, it may be under mine, under Five, uh, in which case, we would need to redefine the goal itself, uh, and then, uh, include something in there for the target objective, but, so we'll work on that.
Anyone else? I do have one. Uh, Linda, on Goal One, Number Six, uh, what increase did we have, uh, from the previous school years, uh, when, on this item? I'm interested because the, the objective is increase only two percent, and I thought we were going to be more aggressive in that, in, in this area.
Dr. Ogletree, we do not have that data yet. So we don't have all the state data, uh, yet. You may, you may recall that we do the TAPER report, the, the state report later in January, because we wait to get all that, um, all that information. But I can go back and look from two years ago, and look to see what, what, uh, what that increase was. I don't have that with me.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, great, uh, great, uh, compilation here, great objectives, and I think we're gonna have a great, uh, school year. It's gonna be awesome. The next thing, the administration will provide a report on the two thousand eighteen STAR three through eight, and of course, and state accountability ratings at the, well, this will be done on Monday.
Monday.
Okay. Uh, we'll go to the action items, consensus items. A, the board will consider approving the minutes of the August thirteen, twenty eighteen regular board meeting. And next is the non-consensus items. On A, the board will consider awarding bids and contracts and authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda item, and that is one charter bus and travel agency for tour or event services, two district fundraiser services, three grocery goods and supplies, four nutrition services, food and supplies catalog, five restaurant catering and delivery services, six school net IMS, a renewal of perpetual license, seven spirit apparel and promotional items, eight Zonar annual service agreement. Any questions? Any, can we, okay, yes, Tom.
Just a quick comment on Item, Item Number Eight. As Bus Buddy, I got to see Item Number Eight on full display. Uh, the bus driver, as he worked the students in, reminding them, uh, basically to sign in with their badge, uh, sign out when they left the bus, but more than that, he explained to me what type of data he was receiving real time on his screen. Uh, so, transportation knows where every one of our buses happens to be, unlike, uh, other districts that show up on the news where a bus gets lost or, uh, and they can't find it. But it also identifies if a student got on a bus, and when they got off the bus.
And where.
And, and in my case, we had a couple of students who didn't get on the bus, but, but he could prove they didn't get off on the wrong stop because they never got on the bus. Uh, so, so management, I think you, you hit a home run in, in picking the proper software. The software works. I know y'all are, uh, very careful in your selection process, uh, but it, but it was a, a joy to see that something this important for the safety of our kids does in fact work, and it works all the time with immediate information.
I would just add to that, Tom. Uh, probably in the last couple of years, uh, I've received more compliments from parents related, uh, to this one item than anything else that we've done, so it's very effective, and our parents appreciate it.
Can we move this to consensus? B, the board will consider adopting and auto-authorizing the issuance of Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds, Series two thousand eighteen, levying a tax providing for the security of payment thereof, providing for the award of sale thereof in accordance with specified parameters, and enacting other provisions relating there to. Stuart.
Thank you, Dr. Ogletree, members of the board, and Dr. Henry. Uh, we are recommending that you approve, uh, the bond orders on a parameter, say, a bond sale for the two thousand eighteen Series Bonds. That gives administration the authority to sell these bonds on a negotiated basis, uh, within certain parameters as described in the bond orders. Uh, Series two thousand eighteen are, or will be fixed-rate bonds totaling two hundred million dollars, uh, from the two thousand fourteen, uh, voted bond authorization. This bond sale represents Phase Five of the six-year, uh, two thousand fourteen bond program. Uh, after this sale, we will have, uh, a little over a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars remaining, uh, that's authorized, uh, but unissued bonds from that bond election that will be available to sell, uh, in order to fund Phase Six projects. The two hundred million dollars of new money, uh, for Phase Five, uh, projects include the construction of Middle School Nineteen, um, the renovation of, uh, some twenty-six schools and ancillary facilities, um, the upgrade of, of high school labs, um, money for, uh, uh, school buses, and, uh, funding for the architectural fees, uh, that we will be incurring for, uh, the Phase Six projects. So, uh, if you have any questions regarding that, the, uh, the, um, um, our, our, uh, financial advisor, Terrell Palmer, with Post Oak Municipal Advisors, is here, as well as our, uh, Coal Bond Counsel, Jonathan Frills, with Brayswell, and Randy Bates with Bates and Coleman. So with that, I'll turn it over to, and ask, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Yes, Tom? Okay. Bob?
Mine's very brief, but just for clarification, uh, Middle School Nineteen, where are we planning to put that? Is that right?
That's gonna be located on our Hagar site, uh, by Cypress Park. Middle School Nineteen.
Okay. I just, I was making sure that everybody knew where that was going, so.
Roy, Roy builds it, and I pay for it.
We spend lots of Stuart's money.
Well, y'all do a good job of it, and I appreciate it, and I guess, if you're gonna handle that kind of money, your hair's gonna turn white anyway, so. Or lose. Or lose.
Well, you can see what's happened to both of us, so.
Tom.
Already know the answer to this, but, uh, but we have to ask it as a board. Uh, if we approve this, do we have the tax revenues to pay this debt?
Yes, sir. Uh, as, as we project our, uh, values going forward, um, uh, Mr. Palmer has helped me, uh, do a, a tax rate analysis to look at that, uh, and it, it does appear that we will be able to, uh, afford the, the principal and interest on these bonds, as well as all of the other bonds within this tax rate that we will be proposing.
Then the, first, thank you, sir. The, the second question that always has to be addressed, uh, on a matter like this is one of timing. Uh, why is the timing now appropriate, uh, as opposed to later? So, uh, if one, one of the two of y'all would comment on the current interest rate environment, uh, why, uh, going to the market now is better than going to the market, uh, say, three months from now, in terms of the potential buyer's appetite and the interest rate that we would have to pay relative to the issuance of the bonds?
I can address the timing issue, and, and I can ask, uh, Mr. Palmer to come up and, and talk about the, the market, uh, question. With regards to timing, we have, if you think back, if you recall, all of our new money bond sales have been issued in the fall. you recall, all of our new money bond sales have been issued in the fall of each year since the 2014 election. And I do that, I, I set the timing for that for a number of reasons. Specifically, I want to know what, have a good projection of what our property value increases are going to be, because that is the basis for the tax rate that we will propose to adopt and the basis for which we will pay for these bonds. And so the Harris County Appraisal District does not certify those values until late, late August or September, early September. And so one of the reasons why I, I like to sell the bonds in the fall is to make sure that I'm looking at good certified values in my projections for the tax rate.
Thank you.
And Stuart, again, this is Terrell Palmer, financial advisor with Post Oak Municipal Advisors. Just to talk about timing, it's just very difficult for financial advisors to predict where interest rates are really going. We have been in a long-term, you know, cycle of very low interest rates. You have probably gotten a little publicity of the short end of the yield curve with the Fed fund increases, but that hasn't had a dramatic effect on the interest rates of, of districts that would be sold, or, you know, districts that would be selling bonds like Cyfair ISD. As a matter of fact, we've had recent sales for Aldine and Umbel ISD. Both of them received an all-in true interest cost well below 4%. And so the, the interest rates are still very low on, on the longer end. We're just having a little bit of flattening of what they call the yield curve as the Fed increases the short end. We're not issuing on the short end. We have a lot of bonds with an average life of probably 12 to 13 years. And so that has actually remained very low and very stable over the last several years. We have different rules. It's a, it's a, the, the federal government believes that it's, it's a privilege for municipalities to be able to issue tax-exempt bonds. And in those rules, one of our basic rule in that is, is that we have to agree to spend the money within three years. And so it, it wouldn't help us to sell bonds a year before in order to lock in rates if we can't promise to spend that money within, within three years. And so we, we have to abide by those rules in order to be able to, to issue our, our tax exempt bonds.
And what is the interest rate environment appear to be looking like? And I know you, you can't forecast, but, but you can give us our, your thoughts, say, coming six months a year, two years from now. Do you see interest rates are flat, or will they be going down, or will they be going up?
I, I would say that we're on a trend to go up. But, you know, we, and, and financial advisors and investment bankers sweat over five basis points. And so we are higher than we were, and interest rates may go up 15 to 20 basis points, which is really 0.15%, 0.2% overall. We, we have gone up since early in, in 2018. But, but I, I think that we're going to stay in this trading range of, of where we are today and, and move between 20 to 30 basis points, higher or lower, depending on really national and international events are really driving our market. And that's why it's so difficult to predict. Yes, you can predict that the Fed funds are going to increase because they've already talked about that and they've already announced that. But the long-term interest rates are really driven by really things outside of the control of the, of the federal government.
Also, in many respects, the market and the interest rate, interest rate environment doesn't necessarily dictate when we need to sell bonds. It's when the district's needs occur and come due, particularly in the construction of new schools due to enrollment growth. And so in many respects, it's the, the district's need for facilities and the renovation and that sort of thing that dictates when we need to be able to sell those bonds, regardless of what the interest rate environment may look like.
And then the last question. Do we vary the length of the bond maturity based upon the asset upon which the funds are going to be used, or is it all just, say, a 20-year bond?
We structure the, the bonds and the maturity of those bonds to reflect the estimated useful life of the assets in which we are either constructing, building, or purchasing. For instance, if we're building a school or renovating a school, then the bonds that would be used to fund that construction, those projects would be amortized over, say, a 15 to 20-year life, primarily over 20 years. If we're purchasing school buses, the estimated useful life of our buses tend to range between 12 and 15 years. So we will amortize those bonds over 12 years and pay those off within that period of time. As regards to technology, we kind of separate the type of technology that we use and how we amortize those bonds. Technology for infrastructure such as cabling and, and switches and, and those types of things, the estimated useful life of those, of that technology is a little greater. It's about 10 years. And so we pay those bonds off in 10-year period of time. As far as classroom instruction, instructional, instructional technology such as computers and printers and, you know, everything that's been, is being used for instruction, then we amortize those bonds to pay them off in five years.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Willie?
Just, just one comment. And just, just to make sure the board knows all of the projects that are going to be done with phase five. I know that's on the website, but we're checking. Did we put that in the backup, Roy?
We have a list of campuses that are about to roll.
We can send that out to you.
Okay, we'll send it out, just so you'll have a complete list of what phase five projects are. Couple of the major ones are later on in the agenda, but.
Yeah, we didn't put it in the, the packet, packet, and I didn't mention the cost, the budget amounts that we are including in that because obviously some of those have not been bid out, and, and we don't want to disclose what we're actually budgeting for some of those projects.
All right. Item? We'll, we'll keep it on. Yeah, we'll keep it on. On non-consensus. Item C, the board will consider authorizing superintendent or designate to execute and enter local agreement with Harris County Tax Office for school district access to the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles web sub application. Does anyone have any questions on that? Can we move that to consensus? D, the board will consider approving construction proposals and contracts paid from the 2014 bond, bond funds to the recommended contractor and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute all necessary documents related to such contracts as follows. One, proposal, new middle school number 19. Two, the 27 existing Matsky Elementary School repurpose and renovation. And three, 2018 ISC technology and Falcon Annex improvements. Any questions of that? Matt?
Dr. Ogletree, members of the board, Dr. Henry, tonight we're pleased to recommend several construction proposals, contracts for your approval. On July 26, the district received nine competitive seal proposals for middle school 19. The evaluation committee carefully reviewed its proposal and is recommending Satterfield &amp; Ponteeks Construction Company in about $58,296,000. Satterfield &amp; Ponteeks is a Houston-based general contractor that's done a lot of work in the Gulf Coast area and also in Cypress Fairbanks, most notably Cypress Park High School and the recently renovated Moore Elementary. They did a great job out there. Middle School 19 is going to be located at the Educational Village next to Cypress Park High School. It's going to open in 2021 and will be funded from 2014 bond funds. For, on August 19, we received eight competitive seal proposals for existing Matsky Elementary School repurpose and renovation. The evaluation committee is recommending ICI construction in the amount of $15,870,000. ICI is another Houston-based company that's done a lot of work throughout the Gulf Coast, but also in Cyfair. Bain Elementary is an excellent example of their work. This project is also being funded by 2014 bond funds. On August 23, the district received six competitive seal proposals for the ISC Technology Falcon Annex Improvements Project. After careful consideration, this project and evaluation of the, of the proposals, we're recommending ICI construction for this project as well. This project is being funded from 2,000 technology bond funds. And I'd like to thank PPK for being here. They are the architects on all these projects and have done a fantastic job, and we appreciate their support. Happy to answer any questions.
Dr. Ogletree, I just want to clarify. Middle School 19 will actually open for the 2020-2021 school year.
Did I say?
I think you said 2021.
Well, I'm moving it up a little bit. No, we're not moving it up.
Yes, Tom?
We already know this because it's in the board package. But for items number one and two, did we turn out and also wind up picking the low bidder in each case?
Yes.
Thank you. Secondly, you know, a year ago at this time, we were dealing with significant flooding throughout Harris County. I know the, the work has already been designed, but are we satisfied that, that we have addressed those potential concerns as best as we can for items number one and two?
I believe we are. I'll defer any specifics to Mr. Sprague. He was more involved in the design of these projects.
Yes, obviously Matsky is an existing facility. We are doing some pavement improvements as well as the building interior improvements there. And then, of course, the Hagar site, the Educational Village site. We put substantial drainage in when we did the original site infrastructure there to accommodate, you know, any, you know, major flooding event. And it, it fared pretty well considering the amount of rain we had with Harvey. Even though the streets in those areas did flood a little bit, we did not have, other than some rainwater, come into the Cypress Park facility. So we're very confident that we're in good shape there at that site.
Thank you. Can we move this to consensus? All right. E, the board will consider approving and authorizing superintendent or designate to enter into miscellaneous professional service contracts related to the following projects. One, new middle school number 19. Two, existing Matsky Elementary School repurpose and renovation. Any questions? Can we move that to consensus? All right, consensus. F, the board will consider adopting the 2018 tax rate resolution to support the 2018-2019 maintenance and operations and debt service budgets by setting the 2018 MNO and interest and sinking tax rates. Mr. Snow?
Thank you, Dr. Ogletree. If you recall, during the budget presentation that we made back in June, we mentioned that we would not be able to adopt our tax rates that support the 2018-2019 budgets until after we received the certified property values from the Harris County Appraisal District. We did receive those certified values on August the 21st. So we are now prepared to, to bring that forward to you. Also during my presentation, I recommended that we adopt a maintenance and operations tax rate of $1.06 and reduce the debt service tax rate from 40 cents to 38 cents for a total tax rate of $1.44, which is the same tax rate that it has been over the past three years. And recall that we are able to adopt an MNO tax rate greater than $1.04 without conducting a tax ratification election due to the provision in the Texas tax code that provides an exemption, an exception to the TRE regulations in order to respond to natural disasters such as Hurricane Harvey. So the recommended INS tax rate of a dollar, of, of 38 cents plus a transfer of approximately $10 million from the general fund balance is expected to cover the debt service principal and interest of our current outstanding bonds, as well as the expected principal and interest on the additional $200 million of new money bonds that we intend to price in October, the bond orders for which you, you just heard. For your information, and this is some, some interesting, some interesting data that I'm going to give you. Since the May 2014 bond election, we have sold $1.1 billion of new money bonds from the 2004, 2007, and 2014 bond authorizations. And with the closing of the sale of the $200 million that we will sell in October, we will take proceeds of that, of that in November. At that time, we will have sold a total of $1,297.5 million from the 2004, 2007, and the 2014 authorizations. And if you remember that we were conservative in estimating our debt service tax rate in connection with the May 2014 bond election to show that we could sell the remaining 2004 and 2007 bonds, as well as the $1.2 billion of bonds authorized in 2014, all totaling a billion and a half with a debt service tax rate increase of 4.5 cents. And that's what we had estimated at that time and communicated to our community. However, we have managed our long-term debt in such a way as to be able to service all of this new debt with a debt service tax rate that is 3 cents lower than it was in 2013 before the May 2014 bond election. Last month at the August meeting, you approved an agreement and option selection to reduce our wealth per student under chapter 41 in the event that we would become subject to recapture under the foundation school program. That agreement had to be approved by the Commissioner of Education before we could adopt our tax rates, which he has done. So with that being said, we are recommending adoption of the 2018 tax rates of $1.06 for maintenance and operations and 38 cents for interest and sinking totaling $1.44 as described in the resolution that you have in order to support the adopted operating and debt service budgets.
Any questions of Mr. Snow? Can we keep this for Monday? Yes, okay.
And this is really for the viewing audience. We actually, earlier this year, on two separate board meetings, we had a very extensive review of this concept and these numbers. So merely, since we aren't talking about it that much tonight, does not mean that we've not already thoroughly discussed this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. This will be on Monday, non-consensus.
Is it consensus? I'm sorry.
None.
None.
G, the board will consider adopting a resolution to eliminate the state imposed penalty for granting a local option, optional homestead exemption previously adopted under tax code section 11.13N. Mr. Snow?
Thank you. Recall that members of the board asked administration to draft a resolution to eliminate the state funding penalty that exists in the school finance statutes for districts that grant an optional homestead exemption. Under the current school finance system, the district and the state, the district and the state share in the cost of providing a public education. The district's share is the product of its compressed tax rate times the The district's share is the product of its compressed tax rate times the district's taxable property values as determined by the state comptroller, not by Harris County Appraisal District, but by the state comptroller. The funding penalty exists because the comptroller's values do not recognize the optional homestead exemption that is granted by the district, thereby overinflating our taxable values. And remember that the higher our taxable values, the district receives a lesser amount of funding from the state. So, I have drafted the resolution to eliminate the state-imposed penalty for granting a local optional homestead exemption, and you have it before you and forward it to you in advance of the meeting for your review and consideration, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Yes, Bob.
I know you've told us this before, Stuart, but I think it bears repeating, and that is, when we offer this optional homestead exemption, how much money are we leaving on the table that they're saying that we are being penalized against?
If the state recognized 100% of the optional homestead exemption, which, by the way, is almost $5.2 billion in value, if they recognized all of that and reduced our total taxable value by that amount, it would provide us with about $62 million annually.
Stuart, would you explain why you've included? Well, a couple of things. One, I'm disappointed that you left the hyperbole and bombast out of your resolution. But you used the phraseology, "from an optional homestead exemption," the last whereas clause, "to a state-mandated homestead exemption." I think the board understands, because we've talked about this several times, but what does that mean when you say it's now a state-mandated homestead exemption? You know, I thought this was a board-approved optional.
It was a board-approved optional. It was, and if you recall, and one of the whereas's I put in here was that you have granted that option since 1983, and it's 20% of the value of a person's homestead, in addition to or on top of all of the other exemptions that we provide, either locally or from the state. But during the 84th legislature, legislature, there was a tax relief that was enacted that added a section in the Tax Code, 11.13N-1, and that section was, in order to preserve the tax relief that the legislature intended, it prohibited entities that granted an optional homestead exemption from either repealing or changing that exemption for a period of five years. That provision in the law expires December 31st of 2019. So, what used to be an option that the board provided to the community, because you are now prohibited from changing that or touching it or doing anything with it, that has turned into a state-mandated exemption.
Thank you. You know, I think that provides the logic why we are requesting that the penalty be removed, because we can't adjust the penalty ourselves, and the state has put us into a straitjacket where we can't move, but they're still exacting a 60-some-odd-million-dollar penalty. Thank you.
Shall we put this on consensus, or you want to leave? Standalone? All right, non-consensus. H, the board will consider approving on second reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policy. One, CCA local, fiscal management goals and objectives, financial ethics, revised. DH local, employee standards of conduct, revised. FNG local, student rights and responsibilities, student and parent complaints and grievances. I didn't think we had any of those. Revised. GKA local, community relations, conduct on school premises, revised. Any questions from those? Consensus? All right. I, the board will consider approving on first readings, additions, revisions, or deletions to district policy. One, CJA local, contracted services, criminal history, this is an add. DBB local, employment requirements and restrictions, medical examinations and communicable diseases, revised. DHE local, employee standards of conduct, searches, and alcohol-drug testing, revised. DI local, employee welfare, and this is a delete. Any questions? Can we move this to consensus? Consensus. J, the board will consider authorizing the superintendent to execute and interlocal agreement with Harris County Emergency Services District Number Nine for school district police department use of the Harris County Public Safety Radio System. Any questions? Consensus? Yes. I, K, the board will consider adopting a resolution acknowledging October as school priority month. Ms. Ho.
Good evening. The administration would like to ask the board to consider adopting a resolution declaring October school priority month, and I believe you have a copy of the resolution in your backup that was included with the board agenda. School Priority Month is a public education biennium event where school districts across Texas invite locally-elected officials from every level of government, federal, state, and local, to visit and experience firsthand the great things that are happening on our campuses. We will expand our invitation to this event to include our business partners, realtors, and even our empty nesters, those folks that may not have opportunities to visit our schools. We have identified October the 25th as School Priority Day, and our plans have not been finalized, but we are currently planning a very similar event to the one that we held two years ago. The morning will begin at the Berry Center at approximately 8:00 for breakfast, networking, and a presentation by Dr. Henry about really what the focus of the day will be and some of the things that we hope our visitors will be able to experience on the campus tours. The visitors will then load buses and head to campuses, identified campuses, for campus tours. It'll be a very focused tour that we will have planned for our visitors. After completion of the tours, the buses will bring everyone back to the Berry Center, and we'll provide boxed lunches where folks may either pick up their boxed lunch and either head to work or other commitments that they may have, or they're welcome to stay for the briefing session that we will conduct, and allowing them to really share maybe what they witnessed and saw, any questions that they may have about their experience that day. So, we hope that all of the board will be able to join us on October the 25th, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Yes, Bob.
I just am very appreciative that you're doing this, Teresa, because I know our first one that we did was, I considered an extreme success, and especially with our elected officials who came away and I heard nothing but compliments of what they were seeing was going on in our learning environment, and how impressed they were with everything that was being offered and how involved the kids were. So, I appreciate that, and I also thought it was really cool that we had students in many of the schools giving the tour, so that was awesome. Thank you.
All right. We have come to part of our agenda where we will...
Consensus.
Oh, that's right, consensus, right? Can we move that to consensus? Okay, good. We're now going to take a break and set up for a Level Four hearing, go into a closed session for this.
It's open.
Okay. For a Level Four hearing. So, we're going to take a short break and get that set up. We're back in session now. This agenda item is to consider the grievance of Paul and Jackie Owens, parents of a student at Cyfair High School in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. This hearing will be held in open session, and the record will reflect that this hearing began in open session at 8:39, I mean, 7:39, 7:39 PM. The purpose of this hearing is to give Mr. and Mrs. Owens the opportunity to appeal a Level Three hearing officer's decision. The Level Three hearing officer, Dr. Linda Macias, Associate Superintendent for Curriculum, Instruction, and Accountability for the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District, is present to respond for the administration. Mr. and Mrs. Owens and the administration are directed to limit their remarks only to the fact issues created at the Level Three hearing. This is a Level Four complaint review before the Board of Trustees. Mr. and Mrs. Owens will go first and should present arguments that show that the Level Three complaint decision should be reversed or changed in some way. Mr. and Mrs. Owens will be given a total of 10 minutes to present their complaint. The board will then ask the administration to respond. The administration will be limited to 10 minutes to make a presentation. Mr. and Mrs. Owens or the administration can object to fact issues not raised in the record at the Level Three. Mr. and Mrs. Owens and the administration may elect to use their entire 10 minutes for arguments of their case, or they may elect to reserve some time for closing remarks. I will now take a poll of board members. Mr. Bob Covey, Ms. Debbie Blackshire, Ms. Dorsey Mignolia, Mr. Tom Jackson. Can you make a fair and impartial decision?
Yes, I can.
I can.
I can.
And I am John Ogletree, and I can make a fair and impartial decision. Tom Jackson, I will act as our board secretary tonight, and he will be our official timekeeper. When the timer goes off, you may complete the statement that you're making, but I will expect each party to quickly conclude when the time is expired. This is not a due process hearing, so neither party, neither of you are allowed to cross-examine each other. Upon conclusion of the 10-minute, two 10-minute intervals, board members may but are not required to ask questions of Mr. and Mrs. Owens or the administration. At the time conclusion of the questions, the board will deliberate. As board president, I will preside at this Level Four complaint review. If you have any objections, address them to me for my decision. If I have any questions, I will direct them to Ms. Collins. Sims, our general counsel, who is present to advise the board. Board members may ask questions after being recognized by me. Are there any questions on these preliminary matters? Anyone?
I think we have one question.
Yes.
I won't take, I would like to reserve some time after the staff members here have spoken, if that's possible.
Do you want to do eight and two minutes?
Probably about seven and three.
Seven and three?
Yes.
Okay, seven and three. And administration, how do you want to do your time?
We will reserve probably about four minutes for closing remarks, sir.
All right.
Getting some technical things worked out here.
Oh, okay.
No problem. With the board.
We're lying to you.
Right. As it's done. Would you be able to get any more stuff?
That's all.
I'm sorry.
Can I move this?
We've got our timer. We...
Try.
Somewhere.
Owens, you may begin.
Okay.
The timer, does it count down?
It will, at the 30 seconds before your seven minutes up, the green light will come on.
Oh, okay.
And then, I mean, the yellow light will come on.
Yellow light.
And then, the red light will, after your time is up.
Okay. Okay. Dr. Ogletree and other board members, thank you for allowing me to come today and share my findings on the Glass Castle, which is currently on the 11th grade, English III K-level reading list. Again, my name is Paul Owens. I have two daughters that attend school in the Cyfair School District, and I just want to state my position that has been all along, that this Glass Castle has been recommended by the administration. I believe the Glass Castle is inappropriate for high school students and should be completely removed from all reading lists due to the explicit and vulgar language, references to child molestation performed or sanctioned by grandparents and parents, adolescent sexual exploits, and violence associated with alcoholism and abuse. I'm quite disturbed that Cyfair ISD would choose this type of reading material for students who are minors, in most cases. This book is also in violation of the CFISD Student Code of Conduct. If you need to reference, page CC-3, item 21, in regards to the use of profanity and vulgar language. Let me read some excerpts from the book's first 20 pages, if I may, and these were in our Level Three. Page 12, "Kick Some Asses." Page 15, "Dumbass Son of a Bitch." Page 17, "Shit Hole." "Holler Ass." Page 20, "I can't say this word, so I'll abbreviate it." GD, "F*** Tag." "Basterd." Dr. Macias states in the Level Three Appeal Response Letter of August 16th that "the vulgar language spoken by the father in the book wrecks walls, subsides as his role lessons." This is also stated in the Level Two Appeal Response. I flagged the vulgar language throughout my copy of the book. Here's the flags in the first 20 pages. Note that after the first 20 pages, there's a few more flags, quite a few, actually. So, the language, in my opinion, does not subside after the first 20 pages. It's throughout the text. There's some other inappropriate excerpts from the Glass Castle. In page 86, these are the attempted rape of the author when she was about nine years old. I did the chronology based on the preceding and succeeding sections of the book. So, on page 86, "Billy smashed his face against mine, then grabbed my hair and made my head bend sideways, and stuck his tongue in my mouth. It was slimy and disgusting, but when I tried to pull away, he pushed in toward me. The more I pulled, the more he pushed, until he was on top of me and I felt his fingers tugging at my shorts. His other hand was unbuttoning his own pants. To stop him, I put my hand down there, and when I touched..." To stop him, I put my hand down there, and when I touched it, I knew what it was, even though I'd never touched one before." And then on page one forty-six, "Child Molestation by the Grandmother." The grandmother's name in the book is Irma, and the child, the subject of the molestation was Brian, the author's brother, when he was about age ten. So, Irma, who had been drinking since before breakfast, told Brian that his breeches needed mending. He started to take them off, but Irma said she didn't want him running around the house in his skivvies or with a towel wrapped around him, looking like he was a GD dress. It would be easier for her to mend the breeches while he was still wearing them. She ordered him to follow her into grandpa's bedroom, where she kept her sewing kit. They had been gone for about a minute or two when I heard Brian weakly protesting. I went into grandpa's bedroom and saw Irma kneeling on the floor in front of Brian, grabbing at the crotch of his pants, squeezing and kneading while mumbling to herself and telling Brian to hold still, GD. Brian, his cheek, his cheeks wet with tears, was holding his hands protectively between his legs." Brian, age ten. Pages two ten to two thirteen, "Child Molestation Sanctioned by the Father" when the author, Jeanette, was about age thirteen. I'm paraphrasing this one because it's kind of lengthy. So, the father, Rex Walls, uses his daughter, Jeanette, to position her, to position her as a prostitute in a bar so that he can hustle another man in a game of pool. After the pool game, the father allows this adult male to take Jeanette, unaccompanied, to his apartment. Jeanette's father's parting words to Jeanette are, quote, "Just don't do anything I wouldn't do," unquote, and, quote, "Holler if you need me," unquote. The adult male tries to have sex with Jeanette, but she manages to escape. I find it a little bit frightening that Cyfair ISD would include on its reading list a book that even suggested that a father would treat his daughter this way. As listed on the Level Two and Level Three Appeal Responses, the National Council of Teachers of English, NCTE, recommends, endorses, and supports this book. The NCTE recommendation, of which you have a copy, says the book is appropriate and meets the criteria established for school classrooms and libraries. They specifically say, I believe, grades nine through twelve. In reading the NCTE recommendation, we found they failed to mention the explicit and vulgar language, references to child molestation, adolescent sexual exploits, and violence associated with alcoholism and abuse. How could all this vulgar language and inappropriate and disturbing content be missed by the NCTE reviewer? It is disturbing that the administration thinks it is a good idea to have our kids read this type of book, think about it, analyze it, discuss it, and write about it. It is evident that the administration, to me, it's evident, that the administration implemented the recommendation from NCTE without reading the book to determine if it was appropriate for Cyfair ISD English III students. The Cyfair ISD administration should not rely solely on recommendations by organizations such as NCTE, but actually read the books to determine the validity of the recommendation before exposing the material to our kids. This is clearly a gap in the process, I think, for approving book recommendations and needs to be changed to avoid future complaints like this. I think we would all agree that there are many other nonfiction literary works that meet the Texas requirements for English III classes that our students could read, that address the human condition, and demonstrate the means to overcome adverse circumstances. Thank you.
All right, the administration.
Dr. Ogletree, Board members, and Dr. Henry. The district's policy, the district's policy regarding instructional resources, EF Local, states as one of the objectives for instructional resources that the Board should rely on district professional staff to select and acquire instructional resources that present various sides of controversial issues so that students have an opportunity to develop, under guidance, skills in critical analysis and in making informed judgments in their daily lives. It further states that in the selection of instructional resources, professional staff shall ensure that the resources are designed to help students gain an awareness of our pluralistic society, meaning a diverse society where the people in it believe all kinds of different things and tolerate each other's beliefs, even when they don't match their own. The state mandated standard regarding reading comprehension of literacy, text theme, and gen, and gen, and genre, states that students are expected to analyze the way in which the theme or meaning of a selection represents a view or comment on the human condition. It is the administration's opinion that the state standards support the use of the book, The Glass Castle, for instructional purposes. When we evaluate and select instructional materials, we are doing so with all students in mind. Our policy allows for parents to object to a book, instructional resource, or an activity for their child, not for all students, but for their own child, and request an alternate book or resource. The book in question, The Glass Castle by Jeanette Walls, is a memoir that is endorsed by the National Council of Teachers of English and has been reviewed by English teachers in our district. The mature themes of homelessness, abandonment, and neglect extend the text scope to an audience of young readers and young adults, and it is used in our English III K classes. The author tells her story of how she overcame childhood homelessness, abandonment, and neglect through education, perseverance, and hope. It is true that the memoir includes vulgar and explicit language. As a narrator's father, Rex Wells is an alcoholic who is cruel and mean when drunk. The beginning chapters of the novel portray the trauma and neglect that the narrator and her siblings experienced within their family with an alcoholic parent, as well as issues of mental illness. The author never condones the father's actions and demonstrates throughout the book that the actions and vulgar language are wrong and have negative consequences. The author, as well as other authors, do use profanity in their work as a part of developing and giving meaning to a character. The relevant language is basically used to provide credibility to the character. The Cyfair High School administration informed Mr. and Mrs. Owens that the vulgar words are not read out loud in class, are not a topic of conversation, and do not appear on any quizzes and tests. There are references to child molestation, sexual exploits, and abuse that are a part of the pain and suffering Jeanette Walls, the author, endured and are part of her story. However, these scenes are, they're not excessive in nature, and the details are purposefully vague and inferred. The author portrays resilience and courage to rise above these evil moments. The memoir provides our students with the opportunity to explore the vast struggles human can push through. As previously mentioned, parents have the right to object to a book or resource for their child and request an alternate book or activity. Mr. and Mrs. Owens exercised that right, and the Cyfair High School administration ensured that an alternate book was provided. The Cyfair High School administration followed the process that is in place for reviewing a book when the Owens formally objected to this book. They assembled the School Content Review Committee to review the book. The committee included the principal, the director of instruction, a counselor, a librarian, and the English team leader. The librarian and counselor are former high school English teachers. They all read the book, discussed it, and rendered the decision that the book was properly aligned to the text and appropriate for the English III classroom. When the parents appealed the campus's decision to the district, a district committee was assembled that included myself, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, the Director for Secondary Curriculum and Instruction, the Secondary English Coordinator, the Director for Counseling, and the Assistant Director Responsible for our District Library Services. Again, everyone read the book and supported the campus's decision. As a result of the Owens' concern, we reviewed our process for informing parents of sensitive issues contained in required reading. We are in the process of tightening and standardizing this process, and we'll be providing parents with the book titles and with a brief description of the books and instructional purposes prior to the unit of study for all required reading. Again, parents still have the opportunity to object to a reading selection and request an alternate book for their child. In fact, today, we spoke to our, to our high school administrators and shared that this was an expectation, that there would be an opportunity to have parents know what the book is and, and information regarding the book before the book is read. I would like to reserve the remainder of my time for a closing remark.
All right. Mr. Owens, you want to, you have three minutes left?
Please wait, Paul, reset the clock.
Okay.
So, the yellow light in the initial presentations for both of y'all showed at the three-minute mark. I've reset the yellow light to show at the one-minute mark.
Good.
So, the timer's set.
Okay. Just to address some of Dr. Macias's points about diversity. I agree that diversity is important. I don't agree that profanity and vulgarity have anything to do with diversity. There can be lots of diversity, but I don't know of any culture or any race if that's the kind of diversity we're speaking of that sanctions this kind of language and this behavior. So, let's, that's what I, the way I feel about the diversity argument. Alternative books. Maybe this is being addressed, but I know that you've not had many parents probably come forward about this book, maybe none. I think more parents would object if they knew about it. So, yes, the process definitely needs to change. What bothers me a little bit with what Dr. Macias is, is, and, and Dr. Macias, I'm very heartened, as you stated in our Level Three hearing, that you're going to change this process for notifying parents. But the NCTE review of this book was several pages long. So, if we're gonna give parents a little bullet on a form that says, "This is the book, the book, it's about homelessness," all these kinds of things, but they're gonna have to read the book to know what's in it, okay? And if it has vulgarity in situations like I've described here, again, I think if most parents knew about it, they would have a problem. I, it's offensive to me, it was difficult to read this book. Again, this kind of vulgarity and this kind of behavior of adult toward children, we're talking about teenagers. Yeah, they think they're, you know, eighteen going on thirty-two, but they're very impressionable. This kind of material serves to desensitize our teenagers even more. Young boys' views of women, women's views of what young boys expect. And then finally, the alternate book. While I appreciate that this was made available to my daughter and she didn't have to read this book, one thing it did is it isolated her from her class. She was not able to take part in any of these. But she's, she's pretty good about things like that. She's very secure in herself. But still, I don't think a student should be isolated because of inappropriate material, what I consider to be inappropriate material. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Owens.
You still have twenty-nine seconds, sir?
I don't have anything further to say, thank you.
All right, the administration.
Dr. Ogletree, I would just like to quickly make clear that the process that we're streamlining so that parents have a clear understanding of the books that are gonna be read and, and a, a short description of the book will include if vulgarity is a part of that book as well as a sensitive topic that are addressed in that book. I, I would like to, to conclude my final remarks by reading an excerpt from an email from a former Cyfair High School student to his former teacher. And this email actually was sent in January of two thousand and eighteen. The subject is a letter of thanks from a former student. And it says, "Dear Teacher, I was a junior in your English III AP class back in the two thousand and fourteen-fifteen school year. I am currently a sophomore studying mechanical engineering at Stanford University. As I spend more time on Stanford's campus, I increasingly realize that I have a wealth of knowledge of rhetoric, techniques, and practices. I recognize that I am well-versed in great works of American literature from all groups of people, the rich and the poor, male and female, the Ivy League educated, and the high school dropout, black, white, and every race in between. I only have access to this information due to the incredible work of teachers like you. I recently had this epiphany while talking to peers about Martin Luther King Jr. and the upcoming holiday. An acquaintance of mine was giving a presentation on the life of Martin King, Martin Luther King Jr. outside of the mainstream media. While most of the, of the, while most of the room were surprised that the Reverend had great works beside the "I Have a Dream" speech, I could not join in with this group revelation. I grew confused that my peers hadn't heard of the incredibly written, well-written, letter from a Birmingham jail, which seemed to be required high school reading, especially for Stanford students. I began to ask my friends about readings I assumed to be universally read. However, the more I questioned, the more confused I became. I received such blank stares when I inquired about The Adventures of Huckleberry Finn, The Glass Castle, and What to the Slave is the Fourth of July, that I stopped asking around. It became glaringly clear that I was a recipient of a culturally diverse rhetorical education. It is our goal in Cyfair ISD to offer all students a content-rich, rigorous, and culturally diverse education, such as this student has described. Thank you."
Thank you. You still have a minute and eleven seconds, are you through?
Yes, sir.
Okay, everyone through, all right. Any questions, any Board members to Mr. Owens or to the administration?
Mr. and Mrs. Owens, I appreciate you coming and certainly appreciate your thoughts. But I guess my first question to you is, obviously, you've come to this level. So, what exactly are you wanting us, or what are you asking us to do?
Remove the book from the list, remove The Glass Castle from all the reading lists in Cyfair.
And yet, we live in a society where we have fought to not have censorship. So, does that bother you at all?
Let me say this, we're talking about censorship in the school for people that are usually, they're most likely minors. If someone wants to read this book, they can go out and buy it. We bought ours from Half-Price Books, okay? They could go out and buy it when they, they feel like they need to read it. What I would say too about the student that's at Stanford studying mechanical engineering, great institution there, he read the book, I believe, in two thousand and fifteen or so. I doubt that he has high school aid students. So, we bring a different perspective to this hearing. This is the way we feel as parents. We don't feel it's appropriate for our daughters to read this. There's other things in society that are censored, but we're not talking about total censorship. We're talking about censorship based on age. Again, most eleventh graders, I think, are minors, especially in the fall of the junior year. That's what we're asking for.
Well, I don't disagree with you in that I found some of the words appalling, of course.
Yes, sure.
But I'll also tell you that just from my perspective, standing in line at a grocery store, I hear some of those words just standing in line. So, it's not something that I think is surprising. It's not something that I personally approve of. But I also am very concerned about removing everything from the schools based on your beliefs or based on six or eight people's beliefs. And I have to, as a Board member, rely on the people that are doing the educating and believe in that, because we, as a Board, don't believe in crossing over on the day-to-day management. We are a governance board. But I appreciate you answering my questions, and I am glad you were given the option to go to another book. And I'm also glad to hear that your daughter's strong enough that it didn't bother her to ever study another book. So, thank y'all for being here.
Any other questions? Yes, Tom.
Mr. and Mrs. Owens, I like Bob, thank you for being here. This is not, not an easy forum to come to, so I appreciate that you're, you're here. I know, as a parent, there is a book for one of my children to read, and I would not permit them to read it. So, I also know firsthand, as a parent, there is a bit of angst when your child does not get to participate in classroom discussions as a result of your action as a parent. And certainly, your daughter, you indicated, handled it well, but it's not done easily. And certainly, your daughter, you indicated handled it well, but it's not done easily. Were you suggesting that the book should be removed from libraries or merely off the reading list?
Off the reading list.
So you had no difficulty with it staying in the library?
I, I had no difficulty with that, no.
For the book that, the alternative reading material that your daughter was provided, did you find that to be acceptable?
Yes.
Do you happen to recall the name of that book or the author?
Maya Angelou. I know how the something.
I Know Why the Cage Work Sings.
Yes, that's it.
Well, and that certain-
And it did have some, and it did have some language in it.
It does have some language.
Yes.
It has.
And it also has disturbing themes, and, and it's also reflective of real life as well.
Now, I have not read the book, Mr. Jackson. Let's make that clear. But she didn't, she, my daughter would bring things to me, and I think she did say that there were some things in there, but it wasn't, in her opinion, to the level of what was in The Glass Castle when she read the first couple of chapters.
I understand. I have read the book.
Okay.
For the administration, do, do we still require reading of Chaucer's Tales at the senior level?
Yes, sir. It's part of the curriculum.
Yes.
And does that still have disturbing language in there, or has that been excised?
It's the same book.
So the same book that I read-
Yes, sir.
-when I was a senior. Very good, thank you.
Could I say something? I'm not here to talk about other books, okay? I'm here to talk about this book, and this is the book I'm objecting to. So if we want to talk about other books, there's a couple of other ones I'd like to mention that have come to my attention the last couple of days. The titles are Oryx and Cray by Margaret Atwood. I haven't read those books yet, and based on what I've been hearing, I won't go near them, and neither will my kids. So we've got other, other issues here, and, and we need to, I think we need to address them. Our community deserves better.
And Mr. President, I have a question of you. Is it germane for the presenters to go into different materials outside of-
I think we're supposed to stick to the Level III, what happened.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Mr. and Mrs. Owens, as a, as a parent and a grandparent, I can sure appreciate your concern and for your, your daughter and the exposure. Education, though, is, is, is exposure. I, I wanted to ask you if, if your daughter had a student in the class that expressed to her that she'd been sexually molested, that her father was an alcoholic and used all kind of language, what would you say to your daughter about that student?
I would have to think about that quite a lot.
Would you, would you tell your daughter to stay away from that student?
I would not, no. I would, I would tell my daughter, first of all, to pray for that student, pray for her father. That would be my first reaction. And I'd ask her, I'd try to find out a little bit more about what was going on. Definitely support my daughter throughout, throughout, to help her to try to understand that we live in a world where unfortunately, there's a lot of things that are not as they should be. And we should both love every part regardless of what their circumstances are, what their appearance is, things that that may- just off the top of my head, that's the kinds of-
They are not going to use it.
But as you know, as a parent and a grandparent, Dr. Ultri, when a child brings this to you, sometimes you have to go off by yourself and process it. So I'm not quite prepared to give you an extensive, comprehensive answer.
Sure. Sure. I, I just ask that because with a hundred and seventeen thousand students and from all kind of backgrounds, we, it just is humanity, and we have all kind of issues. And as you say, we should still love and respect to everyone. I, I want to ask the administration, is there a way, I like, with the changes there, I think that's good, but is there a way for if parents have opted out of a, of a particular reading where that student is not isolated or, you know, as, as was expressed by Mr. Owens, where that reading that, that they have chosen, the student can still somehow be a part of the class and present or discuss or something of that, if you see where I'm going?
Dr. Ultri, the student is still able to present to the class on the alternate book. But for the student to have a group to work with or another student to work with would mean, in this case, that another parent had objected to this book and asked for the alternate book. And so we would have provided that alternate book to the child as well. In this case, we didn't have another parent that, that, that requested the alternate.
If the, if, if a parent objected and is there any way the student, if the student has other friends in the class could share that, that my parent might have selected me not to read The Glass Castle, and I'm going to read another book, would the student be given an option to-
Absolutely.
-get some other students to be?
Absolutely. If, if another student had come to us and said, you know, student A is reading this different book, I'd like to have the opportunity, the school would have called that parent and said, this is what your child would like to, would like another book, are you giving us permission for this? Because again, on the opposite end, that child is reading something different than the other students. So we wouldn't just give the, give the book to the child. We would, we would probably contact the parent and inform the parent that the child would like to read something different than what the rest of the class is reading is at okay. And if the parent gives permission, absolutely.
Okay. Yes.
Dr. Masiass, in light of this, have we thought of maybe, because you've put a lot of thought into what other things that we can do, of maybe having a, a list of, say, three books that the students could select from, and that way you could have maybe three different discussion groups in the classroom? And so that way, as the Owens daughter felt a little bit, you know, ostracized because she was the only one reading that one book, maybe have several books for the students to select from, the parents receiving, and the list of the books so they could preview them. And I applaud you, Mr. and Ms. Owens, because once your daughter brought it to your attention, you were involved and concerned, whereas many parents probably wouldn't even pay attention or even bother to look to see what the books were about. But could we maybe think about doing something like that so that we could still, there could still be discussion groups, but maybe just two or three?
Ms. Blackshire, actually, we are getting ready for a new language arts adoption year, this, this, this current year. And as we're adopting, we have had those discussions about as we're adopting a book and having other literature to be able to have maybe two or three books that are, that are part of, of that unit to provide more choice. Now, as Owen shared, there, even, even the books, even some of the books that are part of that unit for choice may also have some vulgarity and sensitive topics, as do many of the classics do that we read. So yes, we are looking into that.
We could potentially have one alternative, maybe, that did not have that, that, that much vulgarity in the book?
Probably, yes.
All righty.
I just would say that I do appreciate the fact that you've taken the time to bring this to our attention, Mr. and Mrs. Owens. And I do, I agree with Mr. Jackson. It's kind of a unusual and a difficult situation to come and talk to us, but we really appreciate hearing. I'm very torn about this because I've read the alternative book, and it had a lot of difficult scenarios in there and some difficult language. So unfortunately, as our, as our young men and women mature and get older and see that there are many different sides of humanity and many different experiences for all students, their experience may not be exactly what somebody else had. And I, I think it's very important that students do realize that and have an opportunity to read literature that helps them see that, you know, the world isn't perfect, and it's difficult at times, but people can persevere and accomplish what they need to accomplish. I, I know it's a very awkward situation, but both books have those kinds of scenarios in them, and that's why both books were, that's why probably that was the alternative, because it does still go to the heart of the matter that young men and women have to face situations that are very difficult, and they don't experience exactly what everyone else in the world experiences, and even their friends and neighbors. So I do thank you and appreciate you coming.
Mr. Owens, when you were making your presentation, there was a comment you made, and I wanted to ask you about it to make certain that I did not misunderstand or read something in, into that which you were saying. Was it your impression that this book, with its presentation, condoned this type of behavior or did not condone this type of behavior?
It wasn't my impression that it condoned this type of behavior, but it was so disturbing that I didn't think my daughter should be reading it. Especially the child molestation. Anything that like this could objectify women, I just don't think she should be reading it.
I understand. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you, administration. This matter's been posted for action on Monday, September tenth, two thousand and eighteen, at our board meeting. No vote will be taken on this matter this evening. On Monday evening, the board will exercise one of the following options. One, by majority vote of the board, uphold or reverse. Two, the administration's Level III decision or take any other action deemed appropriate by the board, including taking no action on the matter. Mr. and Mrs. Owens, you will receive written notice of the board's decision following action by the board. If there are no other questions, this hearing is concluded, and the parties may return to their homes. The board will discuss this matter on Monday, and our superintendent's brief briefing will be on Monday. So that's it for tonight.